Order.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Please. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, rooted, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Lisa. Commissioner Kriebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langrea?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman?
Here.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. We are going to go into an executive session at the beginning and to the end due to people's scheduling. So unfortunately, the people in the chambers have to leave the room except for Nicole, our attorney, and Tim McGuire, our solicitor. And Jim, anyone out that you've let into the meeting, you have to put back in the waiting room.
Yeah, I'll put him in back in now.
It shouldn't be too long.
Okay.
Al, you two stay in here, sorry. I know, sorry. You like just sort of melded in the chair there. Ernie, would you just shut the door if you don't mind behind you? There's that little, little greedy thing.
Yeah, everybody's back in the waiting room.
Ready for me to read this? We need a motion first, or?
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Read that and then vote on the motion.
Okay.
New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits the discussion of certain matters within an executive session as an exception to the certain provisions of said law. Vetner City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No action binding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken within an executive session, and the discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted and when public interest will no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. Matters to be discussed are matters relating to collective bargaining agreements.
So our motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So I have a second.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Is Leon coming?
I don't think Leon's here, right?
No Leon there.
No Leon, right, Nicole?
He was, he was.
Okay.
Okay. And I should indicate it is 5:38, and we don't anticipate taking any binding action in executive session, but we probably will when we come out of executive session. Yes, in executive session, we discussed one matter. That was an update concerning collective bargaining agreements, negotiations, excuse me, between the city and the PBA. And I do believe as a result of those negotiations, there will be something placed on the agenda tonight.
Actually, we have the resolution draft form for us to be able to vote on it now, so at the end.
Okay.
So the commission will vote on that before we jump to the next item on our agenda. I'd just like to say one thing before we vote. I do want to thank Maria, Commissioner Kriebel, Chief Biagi, Leon, our auditor, Nicole, our labor attorney, Al, our CFO, as well as the negotiating team of the PBA. This contract is a fair, reasonable contract, as well as taxpayer sensitive. So I'm really, I'm really happy. I think, I think it's a win-win for everyone, and I just wanted to thank everybody involved.
I second that. Really well done, and Tim, you put in yeoman's work on this. So I know that was not easy, not easy.
So.
And I should indicate it's 5:50 now.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve resolution approving the memorandum of agreement between the city of Vetner and the police, well, I can never say, I was gonna say PBA, Local 97, and authorizing the execution of a new collective negotiation agreement between the parties covering the period, January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call, please. Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes.
Next, we have former mayor of Vetner, he's picture somewhere over there, Tim Kreischer. He now works for Atlantic County Government, and he is working with, trying to work with the municipalities in Atlantic County to do shared services. Tim's gonna come up to the mic, and he is gonna do a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the mayor and commissioners for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As Mayor said, I'm the shared service coordinator for Atlantic County. I've been in the position since April, and I'm trying to get around to all the towns and make the elected officials aware of the local efficiency achievement program, which is a state program better known as LEAP. I usually have a PowerPoint presentation to give, but I was asked to keep my presentation to five minutes, so trying to be judicious in the information that I give you. But the LEAP program is established in 2019 with the goal of providing high-quality services at a more efficient, more cheaper cost. Provides the, an opportunity to incentivize municipalities to look into shared services and to explore opportunities to share services, not only with other municipalities, could be with school district, their own school district, fire districts, the county or authorities. There's three types of grants that come under this. One is a fellowship grant, which actually funds my position. The other is a challenge grants, which are for innovative ideas that provide shared servers of great significance. Again, it could be with county, municipalities, fire district, schools, authorities. It just has to be two government agencies that enter into the shared service agreement. It could be up to $150,000 per county with a maximum of three projects per county. To give an example, this is the money and grant that the Atlantic County received to look into the shared countywide municipal court system, which you have agreed to go into. Just to give you some other ideas what's out there. Some have shared medical examiner, fire EMS service. Some towns down in the lower end of Cape May are doing a study for regional emergency response. Some other towns are doing shared equipment and repair. Morris, up in Morris County, Morris Township got together with five other municipalities to look into doing a study on how they can purchase and share big, heavy public works equipment, and not only to buy it, but then a process to repair it, especially those vehicles that need a level of sophistication to repair and some type of certificate to work on. So that's under the, the challenge grant. There's also implementation grants, which are grants that are available to municipalities for one-time cost to implement shared services. Again, counties, municipalities, school districts, fire districts can all be involved. These are up to $250,000. There's no limit to the number of projects that a municipality or a government agency can enter into. It is a 75%, 25% matched by the local agency. However, that, your 25% can be offset by in-kind services. So like Mr. McGuire, his bills to.
Always paying on the attorney.
Yeah, to draft, to draft up the.
Fun, right?
Resolution or whatever can all be offset as part of your 25%.
You've just been volunteered.
But the one thing is, school consolidation and regionalization studies are funded at 100%. There are several local school districts that have done this. Port Republic, Galloway, and Mollica have gone together to do a study to see how they could deliver educational services in a more efficient manner. Port Republic's lost almost $500,000 in state aid, and you can imagine how significant that is to a small district. So they're really struggling to maintain their school. Waymouth, Buna, and Estelle Manor have done the same thing, they're wait to hear. The other three communities did get a $66,000 grant to do the study. Estelle Manor has put in for two dump trucks to purchase to plow the county roads in the shared service agreement, similar to what you guys do. They have 2,200 or 22 square miles of road. It's at the far end of the county, so county had a difficult time getting there. They would like to do it on their own. And again, they bill, just like you do, they bill, they will bill the county for their time and the use of the truck. But basically, they're gonna get, if they get the grant, they could get two dump trucks or maybe one that they can use 364 days out of the year, how many days are they gonna have to plow the roads? Again, I'm sure you're well aware of the Atlantic County Improvement Authority and the ACUA. It could be a shared service agreement with them. Hamilton Township just recently entered into a shared service agreement with the ACUA to pick up their curbside trash, and they got, part of the grant was to buy four, pick up four trash trucks, because the ACUA needed that expanded capability then they're into the agreement, so they were able to pay through the LEAP program. So I have some other examples of some things I've been working on. Your Dino and Summer participated in a, sorry, you couldn't make it the other day.
Talked to them today.
Yeah. For a software package to manage your CRS program, but I have a few other things here, but I see I'm 43 seconds over, so. All right.
We're not that tight.
I'm sorry?
We're not that tight on time.
Oh, I, I do what I'm told.
And it wasn't, he writes him?
Keep it to, I don't know, Maria said she was asked, and you said five minutes, so.
Forerunner thing, and this doesn't go against your time.
We give the mayor another three minutes?
Absolutely.
I was, I was gonna stay and get back up under the open session and do get my other three minutes under that, but if you can give it to me now.
Yield to the three minutes. But the forerunner thing, I talked to Dino and Summer today, and it's, it can be extremely helpful.
That's the software for CSR.
Basically CRS, and it'll help us with our flood certs and all that, and they.
The important thing about that, Commissioner, is because of the number of floods and the financial situation of the insurance fund, they're really cracking down. That the certificate of elevations, you have to have 90% compliance rate, or you, they drop you down to a 10, which means you lose all your discounts. So it's pretty significant to maintain that, that 90% compliance rate, and this helps. Cape May, or Cape May City, Lou Belasco says it saves them about 600 hours a year. So it's, it's pretty effective, and my plan is, now that we've had this webinar, I'm waiting to hear back from some towns, is to look for a shared service. One thing, why didn't combine police departments? Why didn't combine public works? We all know that's probably never gonna happen, at least in our lifetime. So I'm trying to take a different approach in how the county can take the lead in making everybody more efficient. And by using the economy of scales by all 11 towns in the CRS program going into this, we can get a better rate than if each town did it themselves, and maybe the county can pick up the cost or split it or do something. Out of the 11 towns, I think 67% of the ratable base is in those 11 towns. 72% of the county's population are in those 11 towns. So it's certainly something that the county do. So I'm in the process of putting a proposal together for the administration to see about this LEAP. One thing I didn't, I did leave out, trying to stay within the five minutes, is that the notice of funding availability will be out in September, and then that will provide the deadlines and everything. Last year, the deadline was June 30th. It'll probably be earlier this year because they're getting the money out earlier. So, but I'll certainly keep everybody apprised. One of the things that Lisa may be interested in, another project I'm working on, is electronic document and record management system for municipalities to store all their information on a cloud-based system. Again, for the county to take the lead, bundle everybody together, and then offer it to the municipalities for a small fee, or maybe the county can pick it up. But again, by using LEAP, we can get 75% of the cost hopefully paid through that. So that's one of the things that I'm doing. We're also possibly looking at emergency dispatch for EMS and fire, not police. That battle, that battle's been fought and lost. That ain't happening, I've been told, stay away from that. But, you know, and police and fire reported to me for 12 years, and I never realized there is a significant difference, maybe not here in Vetner, but in a lot of towns, dispatching a fire call from a police call, and to have a dedicated staff that will just handle fire and EMS, it's not so much a cost savings, it will actually expand the cost with the county, but it's a public safety issue.
If I can just interrupt, I think it's probably, it might be an opportunity to re-sort of acquaint with Chief Cahill. He's already doing a lot of shared services just organically. He got the Cascade for air, with, for air with Longport and Margate. He's always doing training and some equipment, but he may have some things that are almost able to be, you know, candidates that, you know, maybe, maybe reach out to him, he might have some.
I have talked to Chief Cahill. One of the other ideas I had is, you know, with a number of bayfront properties that we have with decks and some homes right being on the bulkhead, how would you fight a fire in the back? You won't be able to shoot the water up because the deck's there. You know, so I thought the LEAP program would be a perfect opportunity for Vetner, Margate, and Atlantic City to buy a fire boat.
Right.
To fight the fire, you could buy.
Longport has something.
Longport has it, but.
Boat, not really fire, but.
Yeah, they, they have a rescue boat that they retrofit, which is possible with a pump that they could do it. But again, God bless them, but it's a volunteer fire department, and you're kind of relying on them. I know they were going to build a dock, but the last time I checked, it was sitting in the yard. So they have to drive it over to Egg Harbor Town, Seaview Harbor to put it in the water. So, and again, the chief was here, my recollection is a fire doubles every minute. So time, time is of an essence. So I thought that was an opportunity. And again, another opportunity that I sent to all the municipalities is you plow the county roads. Why not brine, broadcast brine at the same time? There's a significant advantage to brining roads, reduces your salt that you have to use. Sometimes you don't even have to plow the roads, it's more environmentally sound to use brine. And you could get a dump truck again for 25%. Do the county roads, but then I'd be able to do your portion of Vetner Avenue and all of Atlantic Avenue, do a shared service agreement with Margate and Longport to do theirs, and, you know, for 25% of the cost of a dump truck. You know, it might be something, if you're interested, we can certainly talk about. But I had sent that out to all the municipalities a while ago. So be glad to answer any questions or comments. The other thing too that I want, is I know you do have some shared services agreement. By law, they are to be registered with the DCA. Now, I'm sure they're not gonna send a state trooper to any of your house to lock you up if you don't.
Only Beth.
But what it does help do, what it does help is for these type of programs, for them to be able to justify it to the governor and say, here, these are the savings that are being generated. It's worthwhile doing it another year. Without that information, these type of programs could, could be killed. So if you do have any, and if you can copy me as well, because I'm trying to build a database of all these shared service agreements, so now I'm in a position to share them with somebody else if there is a need.
Lisa thinks she does that already, but I'll make sure, I'll ask her.
I made a note, I think, I believe we do, I'm almost 100% we already do that. Because I think I've already sent a couple that we do participate in.
Recently.
Recently, yeah, I think I already sent it off, but I'll double check and I'll make sure. Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Yes.
You have, you said that the shared service study for schools is 100%?
100% funded. Those three towns got 66,000.
100% for the studies with the county.
100% funded.
And.
And one other thing, there is a bill, I think it's the governor assigned it, I haven't been able to find out. Sweeney has another bill out there that provides money for K through 12 regionalization, which I don't know if you're interested in that, but that's fully funded as well.
Yeah.
Maybe we put him in touch with Bendland.
I think that's not down the river.
Yeah, it's closer.
Yeah.
That's creeping up the creek.
Yeah.
So we need to get that out.
And then, I know, I just, it just occurred to me that I think we lost our elevator inspection share with Atlantic City.
I believe it's, it's not back. Their inspectors are back.
I know there was a big issue with elevator inspections.
So we had a share with Atlantic City, I think we lost it, I don't know if it's back or not. So maybe that's just on our radar.
I'll follow up with Jimmy tomorrow on that.
And then was there any update on the court? Is there one last person, I think, on the fence that we needed?
Uh, they're waiting to hear from Hamilton Township. They, they meet on August 2nd, so hopefully they will join. Some other towns are still considering it, but Hamilton Township with their caseload is gonna make a difference in the, in the numbers. Everybody, without them, everybody saves, it's a matter of how much.
But we do need that one more, right?
I'm sorry?
Need one more.
Well, actually, Hamilton Township has, right now, they have a few other municipalities with them.
I mean, the mayor's on that committee, so she may even know more than I, but.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good information, thank you.
We don't, we don't have any department heads to this meeting, right? And nothing on Capitol, am I correct?
Nope.
Right, okay. The following are the items scheduled for us to take action after we do our workshop portion of the meeting. We will not have any minutes to approve. We will have an ordinance to introduce, and that's 2021-016, and that is amending and supplementing Chapter 87, building numbering of Section 4 specifications. And in reading this, this is the, the house numbers, I guess, the address. They have to be four, they have to go from three feet to four feet off the ground, am I correct? The size of the letter?
And it should be three inches.
Three inches to four inches, yeah.
It does say three feet to four feet.
Yeah, I'm not crazy, right?
That was me, sorry.
All right, so I'm thinking, okay.
Although it would be nicer.
That would violate the sign order.
I thought it was like just move them up, and that's why, okay, so it's going from three inches to four inches. So here's my question, silly question, but a question somebody's gonna ask. If people have numbers on their house that are three inches, they're not gonna have to change them to four inches, are they? To comply with this ordinance? Are they grandfathered in, or do people need to go and get?
Good question.
Four-inch numbers? So it was a slight question.
No, not a slight question at all.
Even though I was talking about feet.
Yeah. Arabic numbers minimum, does it say anything in here that?
It's a bit onerous to ask everybody in the city to change their number.
And then Jimmy, this is what Jimmy asked, but I think it came to light was when the inspectors, I don't know if it's for new homes.
It's gotta be for new, Tim, did you have any, any insight on that for new construction?
I do not. I'm gonna look right now, but I can't imagine.
I can't imagine, yeah, I can see us going forward when we, when you amend the ordinance, you go forward, you don't.
Right.
You don't go backwards. So I was just asking, because I was thinking.
We can introduce it, and we'd ask that that get, that question get asked. It's interdiction, interdiction.
Interdiction.
Oh, my bad, sorry.
We can, yeah, we can.
We can clarify it, right.
We could do that, that would help.
So I'm glad I asked the question.
It's a good question, there's no stupid question.
Okay, we'll go with that?
Yep, as long as we get that, that direction.
We need, yes, and it should be spelled out, so there's no confusion.
If we, a question for our solicitor, if we amend that, we would have to reintroduce.
You would, okay, if the amendment is that it's, it's only perspective and application, then you would have to reintroduce.
So why don't we just pull it then?
Yeah.
Because I think we have to be clear on that.
How about we just pull that for tonight, because we don't have enough specifics on it.
You agree with that?
Yes.
With that one with the detail, yeah, just pull it, okay.
I'm worried to get the entire city putting four foot in.
Four-foot numbers on their house. The mayor said we need four feet, four-foot numbers.
That's not a good line.
No, okay, we're just gonna move on. It was feet, though, right, Lance, I was saying.
In the notes, it said, in the ordinance, it said.
But in the notes, it's feet, okay, let's make it sure. Okay, the next item is we're gonna have a public hearing, and then the adoption of ordinance 2021-115, and this is something we discussed at the last meeting, so this evening, we have it for the public hearing and then adoption. And it's amending Chapter 115 fees fishing pier regulations of the Code of the City of Vetner, and it's simply stating there's no camping out, no sleeping overnight on the fishing pier. The only activity would be fishing, and of course, if people were up there, just sightseeing or relaxing. And we discussed that in this meeting, so we're okay with that?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Next, we have resolutions that we will be voting on by consent, and I will go through them. The first one is 2021-243, and that's authorizing the settlement in the matter of Sandstock Inc. versus the city of Atlantic City. And just to clarify, and then, Tim McGuire, if you want to add to it, but this is prior to our administration, when we came in office, this was evidently, they were supposed to be a Latino festival, and it was scheduled in the city of Vetner, things fell through the cracks, and there was no festival, and the organization has come after the city and sued us for a very large sum. And thank you very much, Mr. McGuire, has gotten it down to a settlement of $30,000 for the loss of revenue they would have brought in. Did I, I mean, I don't know if you want to explain it anymore, I think that's just it.
Revenue and their alleged cost.
Right.
It's a joint settlement, the city of Atlantic City is also involved, and the city of Atlantic City is contributing twice as much as the city of Vetner.
So this is pointed us from the day we got in office in May of 16, and now it'll be done.
Oh, done.
Thank God, thank you. We okay with that, commissioners?
Yep.
Yes, okay. The next is Resolution 2021-244, and this is, the city of Vetner is entering into a revocable license agreement concerning the property at 6709 Atlantic Avenue, and this was vetted by our city engineer, Ed Stinson. I think we're good with that, correct?
Yes.
The next is 2021-245, Resolution of the city of Vetner, authorizing us to enter another revocable license agreement concerning the property located at 5015 Winchester Avenue, and again, vetted by our engineer, Ed Stinson, yes?
Yes.
We're good? The next is 2021-246, and that is approving the 2021-2022 liquor license renewal for Big A Property Liquor Holdings LLC, which is a pocket license. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Next is 2021-247, authorizing a refund for the recreation fee for Noah Messina for the Downbeat Surf Camp. Explatory. Next is 2021-248, that's New Jersey extending the, Vetner extending the grace period of the 2021 third quarter taxes. Al, is there a reason for this?
We don't have a certified rate as of this time, so we just have to extend it 25 days from the day we mail the bills out.
Thank you. I just have a little question mark there, I wanted to make sure, thank you. Sure the residents don't mind the grace period. Next is, are we okay with that?
Yes, yes.
The next is 2021-249, and that's authorizing a change order, number one, final for the reconstruction of Newport Avenue, we're good?
Indexation error.
That's what? Thank you. Next is Resolution 2021-250, and that is a tax abatement agreement for Block 92, Lot 101, also known as 1B North Marion Avenue. The next is also a tax abatement, and that is for 1A North Marion Avenue. The next is 2021-253, a tax abatement for 109 South.
252.
252, how did I get nine?
No, 109 is right, but the resolution was 252.
252, for 109 South Baltimore Avenue. The next is a tax abatement for 505 Wellington Avenue, tax abatement. Next is 2021-254, and that is a tax abatement for 17 South Newark Avenue. Another tax abatement for 302 North Cornwall Avenue, that's 2021-255. The next resolution is 2021-256, and that's a tax abatement for 102 South Baltimore Avenue. The next is 2021-257, and that is a tax abatement for 310 North Dudley Avenue. The next is 2021-258, and that is awarding a contract for the storm sewer replacement in the Lafayette Utility to the Lafayette Utility Construction, not 6C14320.
And where's that?
That is the corner, intersection of Nashville and Vetner Avenue. Like the crosses, and then after, Ericson, folks.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Next is 2021-259, and that is transferring Leonard Tobek from public safety telecommunication trainee to parking violation officer. Are we okay with all of them, gentlemen?
Yes.
Then we will have approval of our bills and payrolls. Do we have any discussion items tonight? Don't we have anything in writing?
No.
Okay. So the next is our public portion, this is for the public, if you would like to speak on any of the items that I mentioned that we will be voting on. You, once we open it up, you state your name and your address, and anything that we are gonna vote on. There will be. anything that we are gonna vote on, there will be another public portion at the end of the meeting for anything you would like to speak on. So uh do I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jim, see if anybody out there, thank you, Ed. Is it on, is it on something that we talked about?
Good luck.
See you, Ed.
Congratulations on your daughter, by the way.
I don't be at the end.
Be at the end.
And I go fast.
We just have to touch all the pieces we just did. Anybody online?
Is anybody from the public on Zoom who wishes to speak your question on any of the items that are being voted on tonight? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature and you will be recognized. Once recognized, you may turn your camera camera on, give your name and address and speak to the commission. I don't see anyone else.
Okay, thank you, I have a motion to close public portion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and call to order the regular meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do not have any minutes tonight. We took off that introduction of that ordinance, correct?
Yes.
So the next thing on the agenda is a public hearing for the ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero one five. Do I have a motion to open to the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero one five.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtman, yes.
It's now open to the public for this ordinance only, Jim?
Anybody from the public on Zoom who wishes to speak your question on ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero one five? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature and you'll be recognized. Nobody.
No one, okay, thank you. Okay, um, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty, oh, sorry, wait, motion to close the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero one five?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero one five?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one zero one five.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtman, yes.
Next, do I have a motion to adopt by consent, resolutions twenty twenty one dash two four three through twenty twenty one dash two five nine?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtman, yes.
Al, will you please give us our bills and payroll for this period?
Yes, uh, the bill list for this period uh totals two million thirteen thousand six hundred and four dollars fifty one cents. And the payroll for this period is seven hundred nineteen thousand three sixty seven sixty two.
Right, do I have a motion to approve bills and payroll stated from our CFO?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtman, yes.
Our safety report is in there.
Yes.
Okay, uh, the next thing is any commissioner comments or reports?
Very briefly, the storm that rolled through the town last night, several storms, three in a row successfully.
Over under the bed in the basement?
He was freaking out. Our well ten, which is out by the school, was struck. The well's fine, but the mechanism, the electronic mechanism that tells us how much depth of water is in that tower is gone. That's totally fried, right? So Ernie had people come out today, they looked at it, they're gonna give us a price to completely repair that, so.
Like a paddle?
More than that, yeah. It goes up to the top of the tower and it has no traffic, so all that thing that's fried.
Nice.
Yeah, so it's it's happened before, it's a few thousand. It's not terrible, we didn't lose the power, we didn't lose the well.
Right.
We lost some electrons. Uh, other than that, we're we're fine with water, we have plenty of water.
Love our water.
We're pumping more from well eight right now, we're monitoring that, make sure we have enough for the weekend coming in. So the water's not bad, it's just we don't know how much is in it. And that's what keeps the pressure moving, so.
That's all, so. Alright, so you've talked a lot, you didn't teach me that. Thank you, we're still getting uh, you know, the DNC variance.
Yes. Come sit on the planning board.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
Yeah, they're interesting.
Because you take my place, right?
I think I do.
Yeah. Anything else?
Or Tim does, I'm not sure. Nope, I'm good.
Um, I'm I'm good, I I I'll update you guys on my summer project next meeting around, I I was out of town most of the week. But um I do know we have the uh black pole being installed for the for the uh St. Leonard's track for uh commemoration on August, I think it's fourteenth. At night, sorted all that out, that's on the way and in progress.
I'd just like to make one co- comment on behalf of things for all of us that um the city looks beautiful, uh, the events that that cities, the concerts and the different things, I hear it all the time from people. I I think uh our goal's five years ago.
Yeah.
We're getting there. We're there, but we keep going and going.
The city does look really good, the boardwalks never looked better, the trash, the pulling and then the signs and banners, I think, were great.
Awesome.
And I was, I got to see the details at the at the at the beach.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it was a packed packed group, we we kind of brainstormed on what that new shell should be at um because it's just become such a great community event and uh food trucks. Yeah, I mean, it could be um, I think it needs to be big enough to, it could be a real signature venue for the city if we do something right, architecturally speaking. That is maybe a little oversized for what we need, that could all, that still have it there. You know, a band shell, something like a mini version of what they have at um uh those outdoor concerts. A man, a mini man center.
Oh, yeah, mini.
That's a big lift.
That's a big lift.
I got it, but I, it it's just, it's just the, you know, people use the the park as place to sit, people use the boardwalk as a place to sit. And um I think the band, it's attracting better music.
Mm-hmm. Acts that are seeing that and it's a, it's helping the vendors, the vendors almost to a to a truck all sell out.
Oh, yes.
And um and it it's one of those things that I think brings in, has a big slash small town event to the city.
The event I attended for uh, when it was uh, don't call me Francis.
Oh, yeah.
Huge.
Yeah, we were there.
Fifteen hundred people.
It was.
Fifteen hundred people, and every food truck sold out.
Yep.
Every one sold out.
It seems like that core team of Donna and I keep and um our assistant, Deanna, and and then I think Doug E. has been really helpful with them, making sure everything gets done. And they got, they kind of have, they kind of got their rhythm going, where it happens quickly and right now.
And Andy as well, Andy from the um was online, they have a good time, and him get those vendors sorted out. They 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 working through the bugs to where it really clicks.
Concerts, I mean, it was about two weekends ago, it was a whole weekend. And Assemblyman Maggio texted me and said, I just left Cambridge Avenue Beach, that's where you guys go, right? He said, I just left Cambridge Avenue Beach and the city looks good. And I said, thank you, and that was like, I mean, he lives in Northfield and he took the time to to say that. You know, he he took the time to send me a text, maybe.
I I mean, public works also, like doing the worst first and some of the streets that have always been um flooding and potholed, you don't see that as much.
We still have.
You still have enough, but the really bad one.
Can I say the phone calls today?
Okay. The really, you know, it's.
But um.
Well, it's it's a slow process, it takes takes money, it takes time. And in order, look, yes, we could go out and bond for everything and do it all at once and the taxes would be crazy. So we have to do it in in, take fights, take fights as men.
A game and all, that one bite at a time.
Exactly, so it's it's been an an effort, you know, Ed's been a godsend.
Yeah.
Ernie's, Ernie's been doing great and the team they put together over there with with the guys helping out.
Right.
Doug E.'s been phenomenal.
Yeah.
He wants to do the events, he likes being there.
Yeah, yeah, you can tell.
And he enjoys it, so we have to make sure he's happy.
Good.
Moving the trash around, making sure.
Yep.
Move forward, and I think, Al, if I'm not mistaken, our beach bag revenue is higher year to date than it was last year.
Way higher, about.
Way higher, I love that word, way, way higher, I get excited.
About a hundred twenty thousand dollars.
More, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more at this time last year, this year, I'm excited.
Some of that because of the increase, but not all of it.
Not all of it. We have, we had the same number of basses now as we did last year, whole last year.
Really?
So number.
I've been tracking that, remember I asked you about a month, a couple of weeks ago, I asked you the revenue numbers?
Yes, number.
I don't mean to be a pain, but I just like to keep hold on that.
Yeah, it's it's onwards and upwards.
I should say that we did finally get at least some of the bike racks in.
I saw them. Saw them.
This, this started before we were in office.
I know, I know, but they're here.
They're here, so the ones around City Hall, they're good. Um, the one that I think is out at Vetner Coffee is the coffee cup.
Okay.
I think there's a couple of other ones like that, they're still coming in as as we go.
They look like they're built very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're well done. They're well done. The corrals, Ed is working on the corrals because we had a couple of spots that he didn't really think were safe. So we altered where they were going to be. I think the one by four A bike will still go in and that's a, that's a good location.
Right.
And we talked about a couple of corrals where it would be kind of in the corner of a
Right.
of a street.
Of a street, yeah.
It would just be cordoned off, you could lock your bikes there.
On a, she's a, on a twenty foot section.
Yeah, I like it, yeah, it's like your pocket park.
Yeah.
Parkette, parkette.
Yes.
But it's for bikes.
Perfect.
A little little kind of thing, so.
We stay with.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna really encourage people to to bike around.
Which, uh, we can talk later, but I'm curious about which locations because the parklet design is going through final engineering right now. And it'd be a good fit because if they don't um interrupt the twenty foot, but they use that as a buffer area, so there might be a location that they could both be on.
And it was, the one was going to go across, right in front of customers. But Ed was uncomfortable with the safety of that.
Yeah.
On Dorset Avenue.
Right.
It's in between two driveways and it was
Yeah.
a little, that one, I think, would be a good spot for a park.
It could. One of them, yeah, so that would be, yeah, so that would be a good, that's right, so that'd be a good, and it makes sense there, because bonus seating, right?
Yep, the concern Ed had with, I mean, I've talked to him about it with the bikes and sight trauma.
Yeah.
Cars pulling out, it's very difficult to pull out of there already.
Right.
So that might be a reason why not to do it there.
Right.
Either the park or the bikes, so.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Thank you. Yep, that was brief.
Yes.
We're never brief.
I know, anyway, now we have a public portion where you, after we open it up, you can get up, state your name and your address and whatever you like to say.
My name is.
Hold on, I have to, I have to get a motion, do I have a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, my name is Beverly Goldberg and I have lived here in Vetner at one oh seven South Baton Rouge since nineteen sixty six. Uh, my parents bought the house, Irene and Ass Almond, there was no Vassar Square condos there, they did not know they were building them. And they didn't know that they were building a parking lot next door to their house, Vassar bought the land, put a parking lot there and that's all well and fine, that's the way it was. In nineteen eighty, I inherited the house um with, along with my three children, Eric, Barry and Adam Goldberg. And if we sound familiar, uh, we are, my son Adam is the creator of the TV show The Goldbergs. And that's who we are and we've been there and we have a problem that we've had since nineteen eighty when I inherited the house. And that is the parking issue on our street.
Baton Rouge?
You got it, we're the first block in Vetner and the houses on the opposite side of me, the even side, have bigger lots, they all have parking, they all have garages. Me and two other neighbors have no um kind of parking, we have an alley, we don't have parking. Remember, my house was built a hundred and twenty two years ago, a hundred and twenty three in eighteen ninety eight. At which time you had a horse and buggy, it was built with gaslight, it didn't even have electricity. And we're still standing, I can proudly say. But um I I need a solution to this, this is so bad, it's been going on since the eighties and I was telling them how, while we were waiting here, that my son actually did an episode about it, about the parking uh back in nineteen eighty, somebody from five streets away came and parked on in front of the house and I was in an argument and my son was filming it with his video camera upstairs. And the guy yelled.
Get a park parking permit?
Yes, but they don't work, first of all, they don't work for several reasons. Number one, um Vassar condo, and they're really nice there. The people don't want to pay for parking on their lots and the valet and all that, so they get a pass and then they're all over the street. Then we have an Airbnb across the street from me at one oh four and uh he's advertising party house on the internet, up to fifty people. I don't think so, so he has at least four to six vans every week that come and these people park.
What's that address?
One oh four. One oh four. And you complained about it before.
You do not have off-street parking, you mentioned it, Al.
I have no off-street parking, I have a little alley about fifty and we just paved it along with, my neighbor gave me part of their alley so that if we have to, we can pull one car in there. But there's three houses like this on the street, so I I would like some kind of an ordinance. First of all, Vassar Square, why can't they park their cars over on Vassar? They have parking for four, they want it, they want it on their other side of their parking lot, if you go over there, you can see. There's no parking when you come in this street and the apartment building's all the way at the end, I could see in front of the apartment building where you pull out, they don't want parking, but they have at least ten spots that can be added and they're in favor of it, that they would do that. And secondly, I don't know if it's possible, can we get designated on our street as a private street with no parking unless you have a permit that you live on that street?
We would have to do that to the whole city.
You'd have to do that to the entire city, the city lives there right away.
Right, but I think if we could give Vassar parking on both sides of their street in front of a parking lot, it's not like there's a house there.
Right, I'm not saying the same.
That would alleviate a lot of the parking on our street.
It's too narrow to park on both sides.
For what, Vassar?
It's not narrow, it's a wider street than ours, the trucks can't even get down our street when there's parking.
Too narrow.
Yeah, public safety would have to weigh in on whether or not it is narrow or not.
Can they look into it?
Just to finish, they have equipment that has to be able to service all the.
I understand. Well, that equipment can barely get into our street. And starting tonight, and I took a chance coming here with my car, because we don't leave our cars on the weekend, we're afraid. Uh, you know, I I spend six months a year in Florida and when we came up, I was on, we were only gonna bring one car because of the parking situation. It's, it's so out of hand and what's happened, and I've been here a lot of years, fifty five years in that house. And what's happened is, you know, years ago, people had one car and they came and that was it. Now, there's like they sick, when you have like a house across the street getting six SUVs that are gajumbo. And today, somebody parked and they had one of the uh visitors' things, was all crumpled up like they had found it in the trash somewhere with something on top of the car yet, like it, what do you call those things, when they have like a whole thing on top? Yeah, I mean, it's just ridiculous, it's so ridiculous.
Oh, I don't know, we can, we can't really comment on the the one to three cars per family or the size of the SUV. I I appreciate that, we all do.
Yeah, I mean, we all have that situation.
Yeah.
But last weekend, I had, we had a really bad altercation, some young man came with a suitcase to visit somebody, grandma over in Vassar or whatever, and my husband, we're we're putting this uh thing in so we can pull one car in. He said, would you mind parking a little down the street? And the kid said, I'm entitled because I'm a young man and I'm entitled to do what I want to do on this street. And he reported me uh over to uh your, what's her name down there, Jimmy Agostino, who promptly came over and was ready to fine us for doing this pavers on the thing there so we could pull a car in. And I said, you gotta be kidding, here's some kid without tax, he doesn't even have a guest thing. And he comes in and he goes and complains, but me, who pays fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars a year taxes, I'm getting a fine because we wanted like try to get our car, one car at least off the street. But this is.
You understand you have to get permits to do that work?
Yeah, we know that, well, they didn't take anything up, they just put some pavers down on top, that's all. Well, I I went through this with Jimmy, I went through it with him, okay.
Was there a curb, is there a curb cut there? Because I don't think you're allowed to have a curb.
Uh, actually, we had a contractor last summer who broke the concrete. I fell face down into this thing. It had to be fixed or somebody from the street would get hurt.
Couldn't get a, you couldn't, you couldn't park there. You couldn't put a curb cut here because that would take away someone's legal street parking.
No, no, we have a curb there. We have a curb.
Right, but if you use it as a driveway.
I have a, uh, under the house, there's a garage for eighteen hundred up. Put your horse in.
Right.
Similar to what?
Oh, I see. So there is a curb cut.
Do you realize my house, along with another one on the street, were the first homes built in Ventor?
I'm looking at it right now. One oh seven, right?
Yeah, one oh seven. We were the first homes built. I'm not kidding. I have an Edison light bulb just for, if you want it for your museum here, from the year they electrified my house in year one.
Wow.
We've done it, but, um, you know, it's kind of crazy. It really is crazy. And they made the lots too small. And thereafter, when they went down, that's why, like saying in Bruce's track, all that is bigger because they realized what they did in the beginning of Ventnor, that they made the lots forty by fifty and then automobiles were invented and like, where are you going to put these things? Because, you know.
You pick up almost the entire lot, yeah.
Yeah.
You couldn't.
We have a very small, two doors away, they were the other original house on the street. Um, you know, over the years, I've done a lot of investigation. I went back to the original deeds on things and, uh, the house that they, which is an Airbnb facing Vassar, the red brick house with the white trim that looks like it's from the Foreign Legion or something, that was the original manor house for all of Ventor. They owned all of Ventor. And they, they deeded out these properties. It's really kind of interesting if you go into the archives.
Yeah.
With a lot of this stuff. And, uh, which I've done. If you watch the show, you know that I'm very particular about stuff. But I, I'm here because I want some help. What are we going to do on the street that we can alleviate? I do resent when people come from three, four blocks away and park and they don't have the thing. I call the police.
But they have the right to, right?
They do.
Anybody.
You don't own the street.
So you don't own the street.
I know. My husband tells me this all the time.
Yeah.
We don't own the street and I don't mind.
Do you think you're the only?
Maybe we could have the, the attorney explain the. Every street in the city has this parking issue.
I think we have it more because we're the first street, the first beach, the first street. I think that when you have people come down and they, and I feel bad, you know, uh, my husband feels bad for these people. He tells them, you're only allowed to park here. First of all, the signage is wrong. It should be not at the front of the street, but somewhere on the street so that they can see. I mean, they say, well, I don't see a sign here. We'll go back to the front of the street where it says four hour parking only on these streets. You need a permit. I mean, that's the first argument.
Well, you're, yeah, we, we're compassionate for the issue. The city has partly, the parking issue has become a victim of its own success. We've.
Some of those spots can't be, we can't put parking over for at least four or five cars over on Vassar. When you pull into the street, why do they need it so wide?
We can't treat your street any different than any other street in the city. And the, and the, and there, the fact is, no one owns a park, even though you feel as though you should be able to park in front of your house, you are sharing that right away with any public citizen that might want to park there.
I don't mind if they come, you know, I, I get, I get annoyed because they park smack in front of my house. I'm the, like the first house. The whole street can be empty and.
I think your garage could fit a golf cart.
You think my garage what?
Would fit an electric golf cart.
Yes.
You could put a six, some signage on it.
How about Trigger? We could put Trigger in.
You could, you, you.
A little with a little buggy.
Might be a deed restriction for that, but a golf cart, electric low, slow moving vehicle would fit in there.
I'm sure.
You could leave that in and out.
To spend the money, could order it on Amazon because he orders everything else.
A lot of short, short towns are using electric vehicles to keep people for this, just for the same kind of reason.
We don't have enough plugs. Actually, he thought about getting an electric car, but you know, all the, you got to put the plugs in. This is not California where my son lives and there's nine million plugs everywhere. Because nobody has a real car.
I think we're adding some in the city.
We are.
Yeah.
I will say, on the signage issue, I'll have.
Yeah.
Public Works go out and look, put up.
Yeah, I've heard this before. Vassar said, also, we need more signage on the street. Uh, I spoke to the police chief about it and he said, they don't, they come into the street, they don't look at the sign and they come in and they park and then they're stuck with the policing end of it. You know, uh, that they have to police it and they have to come and they, they have some kid hired for the summer. He writes it down and he gives them four hours and.
Yep.
And then.
For the street.
I'm going to be back again about this whole Airbnb issue because I'm starting to really get pissed. I mean, they were parked four vans and then coming out, one hanging out in the middle of the street. I mean, really.
So if they're blocking the sidewalk, please call.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, police came. I called. I said, duh, you know, because I went over.
You have the non-emergency number? You know that number?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm going to, we're going to look into the Airbnb.
The police know me. They broke into my house, uh, last week by mistake.
Okay.
They know who I am. And you can ask the police chief about that. Somebody's medic alert went off. Medic alert.
We're going to move on, see if anybody else.
All right. It's a whole nother story.
Your three minutes are up.
Yeah. Mayor Holtman, if you have any ideas for us to come up with how we can alleviate this a little bit? I mean, I know Vassar said we would love to have a few spots on the street, right at the top of the street.
Commissioner Langria will have our engineer and.
Let him review it and just, that's all I'm asking for tonight.
Okay.
You know, and I'm heading home to cook my salmon because I'm trying to be good to lose that COVID weight. There you go.
All right. Thank you very much.
Nice to see you all.
Same here. Jim, is there anyone out in the waiting area?
Anybody from the public on Zoom who wishes to speak on any items? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature and you'll be recognized.
How are you?
I don't see anyone else.
Okay, thanks.
Linda Famelli, fifty-four oh five and a half Winchester Avenue. This is actually for Commissioner Langria because he and I had a phone conversation a couple of weeks ago uh, with respect to an issue that happened on the fishing pier. First thing I want to do is apologize to you because I feel as though I kind of lost my temper on the phone because I was so upset. So I do want to apologize to you.
We were both passionate.
That's.
How's that? How's that?
We were.
No apology needed.
Okay. And the second thing I wanted to say was thank you because I haven't seen those kids anywhere around, so I don't know where they got to, but I know that.
We had a conversation with our pier masters and they're monitoring it.
Okay.
They're making sure, one, they have the proper passes to be out there and that they're acting properly.
Okay.
They, they, we, I sat down with both Lou Jean and Dan and, um,[1617.18]